Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Amy Melton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I hope everybody has now got their power back from our unfortunate early snow that we had this year, but I wanted to just send a shout out to all of the crews from OPPD for getting out over the weekend and really working through the cold and the snow to get our power back on. So I just wanted to send a shout out to them and hopefully we won't have any more snow for a little while and we can enjoy, we can actually enjoy fall. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on east of all the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for being with us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. And before we begin with the major portion of our agenda today, Councilmember Festerson has an announcement he'd like to make.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge a visitor we have today at City Hall. Jillian McNamara is here shadowing city council members from Gross High School. Give a little wave there for the cameras tonight. There you go. She learned about all kinds of neat things today. Trash pickup and code development and housing inspectors and all kinds of stuff. So we appreciate her interest in local government. Thank you.
And hopefully you'll stay interested after listening to Wasteman and all of that. Madam Clerk.
Items six to 10 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Sienna Francis House Shelter located northwest of 16th and Nicholas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from DS District, GC District, and GI District to DS District. Item seven, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-1 overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item eight, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the land use element of the master plan for the city of Omaha to change the future land map to Civic for this area. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Sienna Francis House Shelter. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat for Sienna Francis House Shelter.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers six through 10 are today proponents, please.
I'm Susan Morris. I'm president of Heritage Services, 10050 Regency Circle, Omaha. Well, here we are. I think this is the final piece of document that we have been working on for a very long time. I want to lift up the Planning Department and Public Works. There's been an incredible amount of time that's been put into getting the plotting to the point that we can bring it to the city council. We are anxiously waiting to break ground, but we just need a permit to do that. Asking your favor of voting yes for this project.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
David Lemke, architect with HDR, 8404 Indian Hills Drive. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. One question though, can I, Sue, is it, can you talk a little bit about what this project is about so that people have an awareness of kind of what we're talking about?
Sure. We were actually approached at Heritage Services. We're thinking we're going on the fourth year now.
Fourth year.
This has been a project that we've been working on for a very long time to build a new overnight shelter. This facility is actually two shelters under one roof. It will house 100 women, up to 100 women and up to 350 men under one roof. There'll be a separate entrance and security for women to enter. They will actually have a separate dining area should they want to be separated and not with the co-mingling of the men under the shelter. Right now, the shelter pretty much on an evening basis puts about 100 men on the floor and on mats, so we don't have sleeping accommodations for them. It's a project that we've been working closely with HDR on. The remediation of the site is occurring right now and that is the remediation and the turning of improvement of the ground for the remediation of the ground where the salvage yard was sitting on. So a lot has been gone into this project. We're very, very excited about it. Actually, we've been challenged to break ground earlier than we originally thought, so it's our hope to be breaking ground by the end of this week or no later than Monday. We hope to be opened and full and running in December of next year. So we laugh and say we have a shorter runway, but we have a bigger project. That's kind of ahead of us. I'm very, very, very pleased and I know that the Board of Directors of Heritage Services who is in partnership with the Omaha Shelter for Homeless Trust is very much in favor of this project and we're pleased to see it. You should feel proud as the city of Omaha. We recognize that the $2.5 million that the city is putting in for remediation and demolition, this is really unprecedented. I don't see other cities doing something like this. And so I lift up the city of Omaha, the work that you're doing, and also lift up the work that the private philanthropists have donated and giving money to this to make this happen.
Thank you. We've got another question. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also just wanted to note that partnership and I think it is special and unique to Omaha that this is happening and I think we all are proud of the city's contribution to this, but also wanted to thank your donors and your board for doing what they do. Many of them are also raising $250 million for the riverfront, which is very exciting, but I don't want it to be lost upon anybody that they're also raising money for this very basic need in our city and something that's tremendously needed. So we want to thank them as well and thank you for your work.
I will do that. I'll pass that along.
Thanks.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Moving seconded to approve items six through 10. No further lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through 10 are approved, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Dahlman Rose located northeast of 7th and Cedar Streets with a request for a waiver of section 53-8 for A lot depth and section 53-8 for D lot frontage. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers Brent Beller, 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the project applicant Dahlman Rose LLC. This project's been before you a number of times, especially with regard to tip, which was finalized, just a reminder, about 1.8 million in tip for this project. So I won't rehash everything about the deal because I know you've heard it before, but again, we're down on 7th and Center and Cedar. This is a former Grosso, I think it's Grosso, florist that was utilized for that, for that use for a number of years. That building has since been demolished. So our parcel is here. It's just under, just over one acres in size. What's being proposed is 36 residential for sale townhome type units. There'll be 16 two-bed, two-and-a-half bath, 20 three-bed, three-and-a-half bath units. All the units will have two-car parking garage. There'll be three levels with the ground floor being the parking, top floor living quarters and actually third floor, cool concept in here. They'll have this, this walkout roof on the third floor, so maybe some good views down towards the river. But here's the preliminary plat. Nothing's really changed. That focus isn't all that good. There we go. Okay, so Cedar on the south, Center Street on the north, 7th Street on the west. As part of this approval, we're rezoning it from GC. This is a residential neighborhood, so we're going GC down to the R7 with a PUR overlay on this. So with that, all residential units, open areas on the, on the east side bordering these neighboring residential units. With that, obviously, we're here for any questions and comments. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item 11. No lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Rocco's Inc. doing business as Rocco's Pizza and Cantina located at 1302 Mike Fahey Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Okay, they're not here, but we're going to approve. They're okay?
The applicant was notified. Um, yes, you would have time to lay this over.
You're here?
Calm down, Rocco. Don't be so shy.
I'm Kevin Colgett.
Kevin?
Sorry.
Just a proponent, just, just a name and address for the record, please.
Oh, okay. Kevin Colgett, 1530 Turnbull Terrace, Plasmin, Nebraska.
Thank you. And you're just here to answer any questions we might have?
Yes, sir. Whatever you need.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, sorry about that.
Right. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Can we just withdraw the motions to lay?
Withdraw the motion. And the original motion? Moved to approve. Is there a second? Moving seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Schwartz Delicatessen LLC doing business as Schwartz Delicatessen located at 8718 Pacific Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 is today proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Sheraton Sari, 306 South 93rd, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116.
You just here to answer any questions?
I am.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved to approve. Moving seconded to approve item, item 13. No further lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for KPR Corporation doing business as Phillips 66 located at 7530 Pacific Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today proponents, please.
Senator Jay Varora, 7530 Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114.
Okay, and you're here to answer any questions we might have? Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Ryan Palmer, 1326 Ridgewood Avenue. And I get gas at this gas station fairly often. It's just right over the hill from my house and I didn't even notice until I was perusing through the agenda today that they're looking to move from a Class A where they sell beer only to one where they're also offering liquor. And that struck me as a concern because people behave differently after they've consumed liquor than after they've consumed lots of beer. You don't have to be a behavioral psychologist to understand that. And I just figured, shoot, if more people knew about this, I mean, it's right, right next to the ABC building for West Side Community Schools. I mean, it might be more than 150 feet, but it's not very far. And it's a really small space. Like, it's really good to go in and get gas and I don't know where they're going to sell liquor from. And I really want to just come down to say, you know, this might be one that you want to consider not approving because there isn't a lot of places to buy liquor along this stretch, but there's a lot of other businesses like restaurants and office buildings and homes. And so I would just encourage you to, to kind of be a little bit more diligent in this one because lots of liquor licenses come through here and it's almost like a stamp of approval if there's no opposition. And I just felt like it was my duty to show up and say, hold on, like, do we need to sell liquor at this spot and why? And I certainly can hope that you guys would be on board with keeping it from becoming what's referred to as like a poor man's liquor cabinet where as soon as they have a few dollars, they can get some liquor and go down the street. And I would hope that you would at least adhere to the policy of not selling single beer cans that are smaller than 24 ounces. Is that right? Because they're already selling single beer cans in 16 ounces. And so what I'm trying to stop is already kind of happening. And if you sell liquor there, it's going to change things. And it's, it's not a change that's going to help anything in the neighborhood other than this person's, maybe this person's, you know, business balance sheet. And, and I was in there, I was in there and I took some pictures. They don't even have enough room to store the beer that they have. I mean, it's sitting out. I don't know if you can turn the light on or something here. But I mean, it's sitting out. There's not even enough room to store the beer that they have. It's 16-ounce cans that are totally accessible. And then right here on the, right here on the place where they're displaying the cold beer, they're selling 16-ounce cans. It's pretty close to a poor man's liquor cabinet. And I'd like to keep that out of that, out of that part of the neighborhood. Thanks for hearing my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you wish some rebuttal time or do you want to respond to that at all?
Well, I just wanted to...
To the microphone, please. Name and address for the record again, please.
Say it again?
Name and address for the record again.
KPR Corporation, 7530 Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116. So according to the gentleman?
Yeah, address us though, but if you can answer a question, yes, please.
Yeah. So he has a concern about that we, everybody's selling like, we have a lot of closed store where they're selling liquor openly. We have a lounge in front of, across the street from us. They're selling the liquor all the time. We have a KPR, new gas station that are coming up, come and go, right next door to us. They are selling liquor too for years. We're just trying to improve our business, given us a good quality and people are asking for it. Derek, a lot of people come in and they're asking for the liquor, small shorts. We know we have a small store. We're going to try to keep everything as limited as possible in order to get the liquor license, so.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is closed, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I'm very familiar with your, your store. I drive by it at least five times a week and at different times of the day. And I'm surprised how busy you are at 6:00 in the morning with people coming into your, your business to get gas and coffee or what have you. In terms of your location, I think in terms of what we've done on other small convenience stores where we've considered the restrictions to no singles below the sizes that were referenced in part here previously, is where there's more of a walking pedestrian neighborhood that where people who have lower incomes then tend to make the convenience store their refrigerator. And this, I, in my familiarity with this neighborhood, is not a pedestrian heavy or emphasized area. So I don't see that happening in this location. Second thing I would say is that you're a responsible operator in this location. There's been no issues that have been brought to my attention in the years that I've been on the council. So a tip of the cap to you for, for your management. And finally, I'd say is, is it's a very, very small store. And so I really don't see you having the capacity to become like a liquor outlet because if you, if you went all in on one thing or so heavily emphasizing one thing, then you turn away a bunch of other, your customers that I see there going there during the week for donuts and coffee and things like that. So I don't, I don't have the concern with your business. But I will tell you this, that I'll be monitoring you closely and I'll probably be stopping in. If your pump's pumped a little faster, I probably would get my gas there, so you might consider a faster pump.
Can you add? So we are changing that our new pumps and next week is going to be our new pumps.
That's music to my ears.
And we put a new carburetor in there. So hopefully it works for us. That's what we're trying to improve our business though, since we've been like way down for long times.
So I, with that, I'm comfortable and I, I would make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Harding.
Actually, I had a question for Mr. Jerem. Do you, do you not want to, do you want to limit the size of the?
Well, he's already limiting himself, as he said, the 16. He's not going to change that, that profile on his, on his beer offerings.
On the liquor, on the liquor though?
Yeah, I don't see a need for it on the liquor. He just, he doesn't have a lot of room that he would, he would have a whole wide variety of liquor sizes anyway.
Okay, so the, you're okay with the smaller?
Right.
Okay.
The, the smaller ones, it's my experience with the pedestrian environment is where they, people go in, they get a shot and a beer and next, you know, the airplane shot is empty and on the sidewalk in the neighborhood right outside the store.
Yeah, this, this been moved and seconded to approve. There are no further lights. Mr. Harding, are you, were you done? I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Moving seconded to approve. There are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, six to one. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 and 16 were held on October 2nd, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moving seconded to approve items 15 and 16. There are, Mr. Pauls.
Oh, you canceled. I canceled.
Oh, okay. All right. So it's been moved and seconded. There are no further lights then, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 and 16 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 17 through 40 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
My name is Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I haven't had time to digest this whole agenda today, so I'm going to comment on every one of them briefly, okay?
You're going to comment on every item on the?
Yes, sir. I don't have a calculator. I haven't been able to add up all of these tax increment financing things. And by the way, there are some property owners in here that are getting...
There's no, there's no tax increment financing on any of these resolutions?
Well, I see that in here.
Yeah, but they're not on the, they're not on the consent.
Excuse me, I have three or four or five minutes here.
We're not going to debate this. Now, I'm going to tell you now, we're not going to debate this.
All right.
Now, the fact of the matter is, is that either you're going to address what's on the agenda or you're going to walk. Pick one. Address what's on this agenda or walk.
Thank you. I would like to address 21. And the, the people in my district living on the 108th between, basically between Q and Harrison are going to be tickled about this. So I asked Todd to, and I think every one of you received some information. And Todd, could I have you just sort of explain a little bit about this upcoming project?
Yeah, Todd Fitzher, Public Works. Yes, I have passed out the information that's available on the KeepOmahaMoving.com webpage and I also can come up and present that if you desire on the screen and walk through that as well. But this project is a federal aid project, so it is 80% funded by the federal highway department and 20% local funding. We are awarding the project. That contractor has the ability to start the project yet this fall, but the project primarily will be completed during the 2019 construction season. One important date that I would like to, to point out and bring up is that Tuesday, November 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Hitchcock Elementary School, the city will have a pre-construction meeting. It will be open to the public. It will be advertised. We'll have the contractor, our construction administration division, as well as our design division, myself, will attend that meeting. Sole purpose of that meeting is to walk all of the residents that use the roadway or live along the roadway through the process of the construction and the phasing, answer any questions that they may have and provide them with contact information to the individuals that they'll need to reach out to during the project.
And could I, just one more time, the date and time?
The date is Tuesday, November 13th, from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM. And it will be held at Hitchcock Elementary School and we will have that advertised with our message boards as well as in the newspaper.
Great. I thank you and I really appreciate giving us this information. And just so people understand how long some of these projects take, if I'm looking at the, the schedule, this was started basically 2006?
Yeah, these federal projects can take a significant amount of time to get through the NEPA documentation process.
Right. It's, they're, actually, it's because of the federal guidelines, right?
Yes.
And your, and your projection is basically the completion of this should be around?
It'll be in the fall of 2019.
Okay. And I'm going to encourage those individuals who live out in that area to go to Hitchcock for that night meeting. So I think you will be impressed with what's going to be, what that area's going to look like in 2019. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is that all you have, Mr. Pauls?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you wanted to bring up 38, 39, and 40.
Also, I'd like to bring up 38, 39, and 40, which deals with our cable TV. And I'm going to ask Liz, who's one of the staff in our office, sort of give us a little update about our cable program.
Sure. Liz Brocoletti, City Council Staff Assistant. Yeah, Rich had asked me to give you a brief update. We've had a lot of changes in this last year. Starting in January, we brought on a new station manager. His name is Mike Wallace and he's been doing a fantastic job out at the studio. I couldn't be happier with him. He's really hit the ground running. He's done some unique programming. For example, he filmed the Cinco de Mayo Parade Live on 24th Street this past May. And he's doing other live programming. He's got a really fun trick or treat program lined up for later this month. And then he's also looking to do some programming for Christmas, which sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun. Just so you know, he has new first run programs for September. We're going to have 136 new first run programs on the channel, which is very exciting. He's also expanded the governmental programming. As you've noticed, we've started broadcasting planning board meetings, which I think is a really great step forward. Mike has also been able to implement a checkout equipment program and so anybody can come to the studio, provide some identification and then get some really good quality cameras that they can use. We've got people doing yoga and other types of programming with that. And he's done a really great job increasing the number of volunteers out at the studio as well. So that's been very exciting to see.
Where's that studio located, just for the public?
Sure, the studio's located at 4725 F Street.
Okay. So it sounds like we really have turned this around. Not that it was needed turning around, but he's really invented some new...
Yep, a little fresh blood and new vision, so. And actually, our CTEC board is scheduled on Monday to vote to extend his contract, so I'm pretty excited about that.
Thank you for how you keep us informed.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Liz. There are no further lights. Is there a motion?
So moved and seconded to approve all of the items under our consent agenda, consent
agenda items 17 through 40. There are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 17 through 40 are approved, seven to zero. Item 41, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issue of bonds to be termed special tax revenue redevelopment bonds, series 2018A, and special tax revenue redevelopment bonds taxable, series 2018B, and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10 million is amended the whole requested by the finance department.
Public hearing on agenda item number 41 is today proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none?
We had the public hearing already.
Oh, we had the public hearing. Oh, it's just a vote. I'm sorry. We had the public hearing already. Vote on item 41. Is there a motion?
And this would be an amendment to the whole.
Okay. Moved, moved and seconded, the amendment to the whole on item 41. Moved, uh, moved and seconded, the amendment of the whole on item forty-one, no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jaram.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item forty-two, a resolution to approve the Forty-four Douglas Student Housing Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at four-four-one-two dash four-four-one-eight Douglas Street and one-one-four dash one-two-zero South Forty-fourth Street in Mount Up Two, two million one hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars.
Public hearing agenda item number forty-two is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Um, before you is the Forty-four Douglas Student Housing Tiff Redevelopment Project that represents a infill redevelopment project here at the corner Forty-Fourth and Douglas. Um, and you can see the site is shaded here in blue, Dodge Street here, Forty-Fourth Douglas here, and Saddle Creek Road to the west. And here is the, uh, the site plan. So it shows that the building, this is the footprint of the building with surface parking, uh, to the north of the building with access from the alley. So this particular project proposes the construction of a four-story apartment building with a hundred and twenty, um, studio efficiency-style market-rate apartments. Um, it does, the applicant does intend to market strongly to the, um, med center, the students at the med center, but not just the students, it is open to anyone in the public. Um, I will add that they've been, they've been conscious, they know the, the issue of affordable housing, and they've been conscious to try to make sure that the rents are more affordable than maybe some of the other newer Tiff projects you've seen. So this project does represent, um, a project that tries to move more toward affordability, particularly thinking about, um, the various people who work at the med center, not just the doctors and, you know, the, the highly skilled and, um, highly paid professionals, but you have the service workers there that also need places to, to live, so they're, um, trying to make sure that they're providing affordable apartments for them as well. This particular redevelopment site previously had six family lots on it, those lots were, um, the lots were combined, it was replatted, and, um, this is consolidated into one redevelopment site for this apartment house, or apartment structure. There will be thirty-three apartment spaces, they do intend to lease about eighty-seven spaces from UNMC, um, in the ramp across the street from the site. Um, it does involve ACI zoning, and they have met with, uh, the city staff to make sure the design is, is acceptable. We're working through those things. Um, the amount of the Tiff is just over two point, uh, one million, and the total investment is about twelve and a half million in this particular project. The project, the committee certainly, Tiff Committee has reviewed it, it does meet with the community development law, and I do have some elevations to share with you before I step aside. So I do believe this is a, a view looking from the southeast corner of the site. So you're looking southeast, this is the south side, south elevation, the east elevation. And I do believe this is the opposite direction, or the, on the south side, so this is south, this is west, and this is the south, I believe. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Tom McClyke, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham Street. Um, Bridget did a great job, uh, kind of, uh, in the project, summarizing the project for him, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Do I need to repeat my name and address again?
Yes.
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. This is about tax increment financing here. The other things were about other giveaways. But anyway, what if we build these and the students don't come? What if we build all these upscale apartments and various things around town with tax increment financing, and people don't come? What if they don't want to pay another twenty dollars on their food bill? What happens? Who walks away from it years from now? Who pays for it years from now? I don't think those questions are really ever asked or discussed at these meetings. Now, yes, we might go upstairs on the ninth floor and attend a meeting, and then have, have it closed down for executive reasons, but we never find out these details. But the other things I was beginning to mention have to do with city giving away money to people that own houses, to redevelop their houses for them, to rerough buildings for them. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I can't afford that.
We're talking about this item.
Tax increment financing is part of the program.
We're talking about this item.
We're talking about this item, yes. Tax increment financing. What happens if they don't come, Mr. Ray?
Thank you, are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President, Bridget, could I have you come?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning.
Thank you, Bridget, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, hopefully we can clear up some of these, uh, I believe are misconceptions of, uh, the tax dollar. And I'm probably going to bore some of you with some of these, asking these on some of the future Tiff projects too, until hopefully we can get this, some of this resolved. Can you tell me right now, on those properties, uh, that, well, I guess they have already been demolished, but what was the property tax on those properties?
So, um, in our Tiff applications, in the Tiff applications, and the part that I'm going to reference is a part of the Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan that is a part of the council document, so all of this information is fully disclosed. So it is, for this particular project, estimated to be about three hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred dollars is what we call the base value. So let me just explain, in the Tiff application, when they submit, what we want to know is, well, what are the, what's the value, property value of those lots that you're submitting for right now? So that we will know kind of an idea of what that base value is that we're looking at. And then, um, we will also ask them to tell us a few other things, but that information is in the application, and it is about thirty, three hundred and forty-two thousand.
So you're telling me, how much are we collecting right now on property tax from those, just rough?
Um, they estimated eleven thousand five sixty-nine, so I'd say almost about twelve thousand.
Okay, right now, on those properties, twelve thousand dollars?
Yeah.
This year? Now, we will be collecting twelve thousand dollars for fifteen years, if it goes to fifteen years?
In this instance, we should be, because, and this is the next step, we will have to set the base value, or the base year and the division year. And what that means is, this tells the county when to freeze the values for that property, and when to now start splitting the values to allow for the increment. And I know some of these terms are?
Right.
Different, but, so that happens through this review process, and right now, the base year is set at twenty eighteen, so that means the base value is the three hundred and forty-two roughly, and the twelve thousand annual taxes roughly is what should be continued, what should be paid throughout the term.
So in other words, for the next, and I'm, I know we're speaking in, in rough terms, but for the next, if this thing goes fifteen years?
Right.
We are going to be getting that certain amount of money every year?
Correct. That's the way it works.
That's, that's coming to us.
To the taxing jurisdictions, and Omaha is one of those, yes.
And, okay, now, with the Tiff, what, where does, how would it get to that money, all, because I hear two million dollars, explain that to me.
So also in, in, in the Tiff application, um, and this is in all of our Tiff applications, would have submitted to the Tiff Committee for their review, the staff reviews this, and staff actually puts this together. This can be complicated, and I want to say that if anyone in the public wants to understand this better, I am always available for them to call me, and I can walk through this with them, so I'll try to be, try not to be painful in this, but what happens is, with the Tiff application, we ask the developers, the applicants, what is the, the most probable final value that you think this project will achieve at the time of completion, or better yet, stabilization? Stabilization being maybe two or three years after completion, when it's fully leased. Um, they'll give us a value, and it's based off of their experience, their market research, maybe even an appraisal. We take that value, and sometimes we'll use an equivalent of total project hard cost. So on this spreadsheet, this calculation spreadsheet, sorry, I have to take my glasses off to do this tiny print, um, it says about thirteen million. What they projected is about thirteen million roughly. Um, so what happens is, we take their, what they're projecting is the final project cost, and subtract out that, uh, base value, which is roughly that three forty-two. That difference is the incremental value that they're anticipating to, um, be achieved over that fifteen-year period. The hope is that it happens right after construction, or within three years of, of construction. Sometimes it takes longer, maybe in the fifth year, maybe in the seventh year, before that number is achieved, but that is the idea, is that increment is what is achieved during that fifteen years, because that increment, when it's plugged into here, this spreadsheet, this side of the spreadsheet is to determine the revenue. So plugged into here, you take it times the levy, this column is the actual tax levy that is set by the, the Douglas County, um, times that revenue gives us the annual revenue. That total revenue is what is available now to figure out how much of a Tiff loan will be supported by that revenue. So it's almost like banking, you, you have so much revenue, income, you can pay for a loan. However much in, income you can pay will determine how much of a loan you can get, so it's kind of that concept. So this side of this calculation spreadsheet factors in the debt piece, and says, okay, if you have this much revenue, how much debt will that support, at what interest rate? We get that interest rate from the bank, or from the developers, and, and it's in the application. Um, and that will then compute, under assumptions, this first line, the loan amount, as well as a maximum potential loan. So it's anywhere between this number and this number is what turns out to be the amount of the Tiff loan that we bring to you guys to approve, and that the Tiff Committee approves. Does that kind of help?
Yeah.
Work through how we, how we come up with the Tiff loan amount? Now, the other thing I would say is, I think the beauty of the way Omaha, um, issues and, and approves and administers Tiff is it's developer-financed, which means there's no risk, so kind of to address the gentleman's question, there is really no risk to the city
Right.
with issuing Tiff, because as I explained, this is based on property values, which means a property, a site has to be redeveloped in order to, um, generate a tax value. So right now, it's three hundred and forty-two roughly. If they don't build it, it won't likely increase. I mean, there's, you know, maybe the annual two or three percent increase in property values over, you know, every year, but generally, there wouldn't be any more value. And, and so if this was approved and they never built it, the Tiff project was approved, in other words, and they never built it, you're really not going to see anything different. The taxing jurisdictions really should not see anything different. If they should, let's say they do build it, let's say they, first of all, the city does approve the Tiff, because they do need it to build, and then they do build it, um, they're the ones that are at risk, because they have to secure all of the financing, the construction financing, they bring equity to the table, and then the Tiff piece, um, that we are approving, in order for them to still do, uh, to build it, they have to get a loan for the amount that we're saying, um, property taxes will be generated over the fifteen years. So this money is, is not coming out of the taxpayers' do, uh, pockets, or out of the city's coffers, or any of the taxing jurisdictions coffers, because that money is generated by increase in valuation, and increase in valuation doesn't come until after the project is built, um, successfully, and hopefully generating what they projected and proposed. So it's really on, upon the developer to bring to fruition the project they proposed and said they're going to build and develop and design. And we trust that they're not going to bring a project if they have not done their homework to make sure there's a market for this. I mean, that's a, a huge risk, we, we've talked, I, I think, a number of times about how development, redevelopment is a risk. Um, so we, we know that they would not bring a project to us, that they know they couldn't make happen and pencil out and have a market to sell it to, to lease it to. So that gives us confidence that, hey, if it's a project, first of all, that we want, that meets with our master plan, um, guidelines, it, it is, you know, fulfilling different needs that the city wants, then we, we want to approve it, but they have to make it happen.
Okay, I, I thank you, and I'm going to be asking this in the future also, because I think it's one of those things you have to ask several times. But in this project, every year, until it's completed, we know that we will get a certain amount of money.
Correct.
Because that's, and so we're actually not losing anything. We will gain once it's finished.
Absolutely.
And, uh, the person is successful, because the city does not, we're not putting that money up.
Yep.
So if it goes down, that's on them.
It, it is on them, and let me just also add that when I say it's not on us, it's on them to get the loan, to complete the financing. There's in the application and in the Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan is a, a funding, um, sources and uses table. So they have to have all those sources ready to go when they break ground, otherwise, they're not going to have a project, they're not going to be able to complete a project. That's one thing. Um, the other thing is, um, I think I just lost my train of thought that quickly, but, um, it, it is upon them, and yes, the city, the taxing jurisdictions will get, and, and this is a function of the county assessors, because we have to keep in mind, we're on the city side. They're projecting values based on what they think the project final value will be. It is all dependent upon what the county assessors will actually place, um, a value at the, um, time that the project is complete. So we don't control that value, I think we know the county assessors do. Um, sometimes it's, it's worth, uh, I guess, stating that, because sometimes maybe the public doesn't realize, we don't control that value. They're projecting what they think it is, we, we work and see if that makes sense. If it does, we plug it in and come up with the Tiff loan amount, but it is up to the county assessors to say, yeah, we agree with that final value. And if they do, then at the end of the project, that value is going to be much higher than it is right now, and those dollars, those tax revenues, property tax revenues, that were being deferred to pay off the loan that they had to get
Okay.
will now come to all the taxing jurisdictions.
And, and they, would you say, most of the time, it's, uh, significant?
Yes, I would say that.
I mean, I just haven't, take a look at, uh, First National Bank and see how much, uh, we're getting from that chunk of land.
Yeah.
Uh, I thank you for this, and again, um, as I'm telling my peers up here, I'm going to request you do this now and again on a Tiff project until we get it, uh, people to really understand that, that the city is not putting up all this money. It's up to the developer to make it work.
Right, and, and I will also add that there is a, I'll keep probably saying this, and just because I want to drive traffic to our Tiff
Yes.
website, we created, um, that so that the public could have access to information, um, hopefully becoming more transparent about Tiff projects and how Tiff works. And there is a report, a couple of reports that will, I think, explain some of the information I shared with you today.
I, I thank you for putting up with me a little bit, but
You're welcome.
just again, it will be again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I sit here and I think how lucky we are that a couple of weeks ago, we had Professor Melton give us Tiff one oh one, and today, we have Professor Hadley give us Tiff two oh three. Um, which is, it's very informative, and, and I thank you for that. Um, I also wanted to say that, um, all this information is public and readily available for the public to have access to. And for someone to come to the microphone and say that they haven't even gone through the agenda, but they say we're hiding things, I think shows how disingenuous their intentions really are.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Actually, I kind of just wanted to second a little bit about what Councilman Harding said, and this is all publicly available. Um, these, these decisions are not necessarily made behind closed doors, um, and I, I think, Bridget, you, you do make yourself readily available, and there's been so many people that you have talked to and explained the Tiff, including myself, and I think you spent at least two hours with me about five years ago. And, and I appreciate that, because it just makes sense. And when you start to look at all of the properties that are coming off, uh, and, and actually coming back on the t- and, and actually coming back on the tax rolls with these increased values, to me, it looks like this is going to be at least four times the value that it is. So if it's at twelve thousand right now, I mean, we're looking at close to fifty thousand dollars in taxes per year that they'll end up paying. I think those were the, roughly, those were the figures that maybe you gave. And, and so this is what benefits, and this is how we actually grow our tax revenues without having to increase people's taxes. And I think that's what we all want to do is grow that, that tax base. And I think this is one of the finest ways that we do it without putting the taxpayers on the hook, without having any risk to the taxpayers. Because, Mr. McCly, could you, I think you're behind there, I can't see you.
Yeah, every time we say it's all on him, he gets a little smaller and smaller.
But all the risk is on, is, is on you and, and your investors, isn't that right?
That's, that's correct. You know, thi- this is a, a great example of a public-private partnership. The, the incentive is created for the private party to engage in something that's really kind of doing a public good, which is growing the overall tax base for us. And, and this, I think, is a, a great method that the government has across from the federal, state and local levels, has grown more and more into these public-private partnerships versus just government work, if you will. And I point out for a number of years, a lot of this began under the Reagan administration back in the mid-eighties with the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program, the Historic Tax Credit Program. Unfortunately, too many public housing programs across the country weren't working. From Cabrini-Green in Chicago to, to, to all, lots and lots of examples. So the, the Affordable Housing Program was created to create an incentive for people to create affordable housing, but they're still on the hook for it. And so you're going to design things that you, people are going to pay rent for, that you're going to market for. But yes, the short answer to that question is there's, we're on the hook for every penny of this project. It is all privately funded at that point. There's no public dollars that are granted to us. The only money that comes into it is our own equity and then financing from banks. Either from the TIF finance, financing that they give us for the TIF or a construction loan.
Right, so it, let's just say in the event that none of the students want to rent these, although I, I think they look, they look pretty good. I, I like the look of that building. But in the event, say you default on the loan, I don't believe you will, but it's the lender that then is on the hook. So again, it doesn't come back.
Not going to lender. I know who the lender will be looking towards. They won't think they're on the hook. They're going to think someone else. It'll be us, it'll be us on the hook for it, yes. Not the government. There's, there's nothing the lender can do to come back at that point in time towards the city government, state or federal government.
And I think that that's the problem is a lot of people hear that it's a loan and they hear tax increment finance and then they hear that the city council approves it. So people think we're loaning the money.
No, if you want to.
I think I'll let you continue to take that risk, but I think you, you have some pretty good projects going on in the city. And, and I think this is excellent because there is a, there is a need for affordable apartments in that area. And especially as we see UNMC grow, which is fabulous, especially with the iXcel program. I mean, there's just tremendous growth in, in that area and with UNMC and putting some apartments that, that people can afford who are working at UNMC. That also helps when people complain about transportation and wanting to have a place where they can live, work and play. You're kind of giving, you're, you're providing that. So I, I, I think that that would give you and your lender some security that these apartments probably will, will be rented and, and be full pretty quickly.
And obviously, there, that, we believe that, I mean, we wouldn't be here risking so much on ourselves for it. But there is risk. I mean, that is, that is the problem, that, that is the, the nature of development is it's risk and it's long-term risk. I mean, but we conceived this project probably almost two years ago. And it's going to be another year before we're available. Things can happen. There is lots of risk on us. We try to obviate that risk as best we can as we move along. And one of the ways in this one is, and this goes a little bit to comments I've made in the last few city council hearings, is that we are targeting this towards, as Bridget stated, a, a, a lower price point than we have in the past in the Blackstone and a number of other apartment developments. We're trying to find a way to make it more affordable and, and not have everything be so expensive for students who don't always can't afford things, for employees in the Med Center, and anyone, the general public as a whole. But very cognizant of, of the affordable housing issues that are, that are facing the city right now. As many of you know, I've done a lot of affordable housing tax credit projects here in Omaha. And we need to continue to address that. This is kind of a middle of that. This isn't an affordable housing tax credit project, but this is a step towards that direction. But I, I would love to see and, and have had conversations with Bridget and, and some of you all about creating more affordable housing. I think some of the projects, some of the media attention right now on the substandard housing that is occurring, in my opinion, is a symptom of the disease. It is not the disease itself. The disease is the lack of creating affordable housing in Omaha. And I hope to be having some things here in the city council in the next few months to, to, to start to address the, the disease, if you will.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I too enjoy the college classes, but I can't speak for anybody else. I need the extra credit. So Bridget, I got a couple of questions for you, just to clear some things up. Just so everybody knows, there's not like a big wheel that says yes or no and you throw a dart to these TIF projects. There is actual a TIF committee that you mentioned. Could you tell me who's on that TIF committee that makes these choices?
Yes, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. So yes, there's a committee of eight, nine members. And again, that information is in our TIF guidelines, which is on the website, all public information. So it is the Planning Director and then the, the Planning Economic Development Manager. And, and that happens to be me. However, if I am the one, the staff member who is reviewing and evaluating the TIF application between myself and Don, if, if I'm the one, then I do not, I recuse myself and I do not vote on that TIF project as a TIF committee member. So I'm just openly disclosing that. Paul Kratz, Stephen Curtis, Finance Director, Alan Herrick, the Comptroller, City Comptroller, Bob Stewie, the Public Works Director, Todd Fitzer, the City Engineer. Troy is representing the Mayor's Office. And I believe as a, as the ninth member, Kevin Anderson, I believe, is, is the second Mayor's Representative. So there's two representatives from the Mayor's Department, two from the Finance, two from Public Works and two from Planning.
Wow. Thank you. That's like a who's who, who keeps the city afloat, I'd say. So that was a, that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve, is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve item forty-two, no further lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jaram.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty-two is approved, seven to zero. Item forty-three, a resolution to approve a settlement in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the pending lawsuit entitled Lucilla Velezquez Burgos versus City of Omaha.
Public hearing agenda, item number forty-three is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item forty-three, no lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty-three is approved, seven to zero. Item forty-four, an ordinance to accept a price agreement in the amount of eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars with B&amp;W Company Inc. for machine sweeping services to be in effect from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three.
Public hearing agenda, item number forty-four is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item forty-five, an ordinance to acquire private property for the purpose of constructing the Sixty-second and Bancroft Storm Sewer Project.
Public hearing agenda, item number forty-five is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item forty-six, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for condemned buildings or structures on certain lots in the City of Omaha, group number twenty eighteen dash zero one.
Public hearing agenda, item number forty-six is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two. My point being, if they don't come, if we build these things and they don't come and they walk away.
We're talking about item forty-six, Larry.
I'm talking about forty-six, will you let me do it?
No, I'm not going to let you do it. I'm telling you that we're on item forty-six and you're not going to violate the rules.
Let's talk special tax assessment.
We're not going to have this discussion. See you later. Item forty-six, are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Is there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item. Next item.
Item forty-seven, an ordinance to amend section twenty-three dash one seven seven of the Omaha Municipal Code concerning employment classifications by adding the employment classification for Human Resources Information Systems Manager. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing agenda, item number forty-seven is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Jim Begley, City Human Resources, here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item forty-eight, an ordinance mending the Blackstone Business Improvement District to expand the boundaries of the district, to change the assessment methodology to one based on valuation, to increase the budget of the BID and to allow for an annual escalator and to create exemptions from the expenses of the BID.
Public hearing agenda, item number forty-eight is today, proponents please.
Thank you. Bernard Nembosh, Deputy City Attorney, and I'll just speak briefly. What you have before you is an ordinance that I prepared at the request of the Blackstone Business Improvement District. They've been in, I think they were created five and a half years ago or so. Been fairly active, fairly involved. They approached me a few months back about wanting to expand their boundaries. So we've increased it from Farnham Street along thirty-six and Forty-second to, from Dodge and Dewey, from Forty-second to about Thirty-Fifth Street. So Adrian Hernandez, who is the president of that board, is here to, to speak to it. I'll be happy to answer any technical questions that you might have. I know there is one amendment that's coming. I will prepare that and obviously have that ready for you next week, so.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Adrian Hernandez, three zero two, South Thirty-eighth Street. I just want to speak today about the tremendous success of the Blackstone District. I work at Dundee Bank. My role as President of the BID is a volunteer role. Part of the reason why the bank decided to invest in the Blackstone District was because of the partnerships that we could see forming between property owners, citizens, business owners. And that was exciting to us. So I think the last five years, the BID has proven to me that it's been successful. And this effort that you have in front of you today is an attempt to build upon that momentum that's happened in the last five years and continue to build a district that serves and also to build a budget that serves a larger district and a district, Blackstone District for what is coming, not what it was five years ago.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Jay Lun, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham Street. As the last president of the BID, Blackstone, and you all know the story and we don't have to repeat that today, but I wanted to give, you know, Councilman Jaram some credit for bringing up the idea of a BID to me about, God, that might have been been seven years ago. At the time, I was on the Benson BID Board and, and had some experience with that. But just to kind of remind the council and, and thank the council for, for everything that you've done to support us. Without the BID having been created, we never would have gotten Farnham Street to, to convert from a one-way to a two-way. Without Farnham Street converting from a one-way to a two-way, there would be no Blackstone District. So that's, that's how important this BID is. I'm a huge believer in what BIDs do for other parts of the city. And with that, I appreciate your, your support.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, I'm Brian Spencer. I'm the Director of Planning for the University of Nebraska Medical Center in Nebraska Medicine, the health system. Nine eight seven five oh two Nebraska Medical Center Drive. I'm also a volunteer board member, serving with Adrian and Jay on, on the Board of Directors of the BID. The university strongly and deeply appreciates the development that's happened in Blackstone. It makes us a better place to live, work and play. It helps us recruit the people that we need today, tomorrow, and generate the kind of folks and education atmosphere that we need to be a world-class Big Ten institution. It's a big part of how we succeed is when our succe- city succeeds. We deeply appreciate Todd and the team at, at the city who have partnered with us all these years and working through Blackstone stuff. We've got more coming, Jay and, and that group and the BID aren't going to stop making this a better place to be. And we're excited to support that.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hello there, Phil Schaffert, four zero zero nine Farnham Street. Along with being a volunteer member of the board, I'm also a business owner on the street. And I just wanted to voice my support for all the projects that the BID has done and will do. It's been very helpful for the neighborhood and we look forward to more successful things in the future.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, my name is Patrick Zock, three oh two, South Thirty-eighth Street. I am the President of the Blackstone Business Association and I just want to do, express my support for this. These guys have been a great partner for us. They've done a lot of good in the neighborhood. They've supported some of our initiatives that we've taken on, beautification, public safety. We just had Farnham Fest a few weeks ago and that was a huge success and we couldn't do it without their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Myron Kaplan. I'm with the law firm of McGill Gottstein, I work in a left, one one four zero four West Dodge Road, Suite five hundred. I'm here on behalf of my client, Belgrade Holdings Limited Partnership. My client owns three multifamily properties in the proposed expanded BID. I don't believe that multifamily or any residential should be in the BID. I think it's a, BIDs are a creature of state statute. Section nineteen forty twenty of the Nebraska statute says, "A business improvement district can only be created within the boundaries of business area." The statutes go on to define what is a business area. And section nineteen forty forty seventeen point zero one, parents four, defines business area as an area established, area of the city, of, of city zone for business, public or commercial purposes. My client's property is not zoned for business, public or commercial purposes. It's residential zoning. Even if for argument's sake, you say my client's property is in a business area, okay? We would argue that the, all the benefits of this BID are going for the commercial property owners on both Harney and Farnham Street. While my client may getting, may be getting some tangential benefit, it's infinitesimal compared to the benefit going to these commercial property owners. You have two other BIDs in Omaha. You have Dundee and you have the Downtown Business Association, which has a two-tiered system of assessments. The commercial property is assessed at one hundred percent. And the residential multifamily, or in the case of downtown, it's just residential, is assessed at fifty percent of the rate of the commercial property owners. I think that's designed to determine that, okay, maybe the residential is getting some benefit, but they're not getting anywhere near the benefit of the commercial property owners. Under the, for instance, under the current Blackstone BID ordinance, you did have a tiered system of assessments. You were assessing owner-occupied residential property at fifty percent of the commercial property. For some reason, in this amended ordinance or this new ordinance, you're now exempting all owner-occupied residential property. What's the difference between owner-occupied and multifamily? We're not getting, my client's not getting any more benefit than any of these owner-occupied residents. But yet, we're going to be taxed at a hundred percent and now you're going to exempt them totally. Finally, because of the way you're changing the assessment of these properties, there are many prop, commercial properties in this district, they're going to see a substantial reduction in their special assessment. At the same time, they're going to be gaining a substantial benefit. For instance, and through the benefit of the city's legal department, they gave me four properties. Thirty-seven nineteen Farnham, they're going to see a thousand, thirty-four dollar ninety-nine cent decrease in their special assessment. Thirty-eight nineteen Farnham's going to get a four hundred and sixty-two dollar nine, and seventy-nine cent reduction. Forty oh one Farnham's going to get a five hundred and eleven dollar forty-five cent reduction. And three oh two, South Thirty-eighth is getting a five hundred and ninety-two dollar reduction. And I want to guess these are just a few of the commercial property owners. They're going to see a reduction. At the same time, they're going to get substantial increases. My client isn't against the BID, supports the BID, but doesn't think he should be assessed the same level of commercial properties when he's not going to get the same benefits. For these reasons, we'd want to ask that you exempt multifamily from the BID. Or the alternative, at least you go to a bifurcated assessment system. alternative, at least you go to a bifurcated assessment system and assess the multifamily the same way you assess the multifamily in Dundee and downtown at fifty percent of the commercial rate. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents wish some time to address some of the questions?
Sure. And certainly I'll address, I mean, we obviously have five different BIDs in Omaha. Five BIDs are all a little bit different as far as they are. Mr. Kaplan's addressing the statute about business, business areas, certainly talks about an established area of the city zone for certain uses, but I don't think there's anything about it that excludes residential. And frankly, if you look at how that's been interpreted and used, not only in Omaha, but in Lincoln, BIDs have typically included residential property. And as Mr. Kaplan correctly notes, in several instances, I apologize, Bernard Inambash, Deputy City Attorney, in several instances, we have, there are discounts for residential. Sometimes there are, sometimes there're not. Sometimes there's a fifty percent discount for residential like there is downtown. There are some that do for, do an exemption for owner-occupied houses, some that don't. He is correct that there's supposed to be some, there's supposed to be a relationship between the special benefit that people receive and what they're assessed. That is part of the analysis that the Business Improvement District Board is, is supposed to do. And if that's, and as we know from other board, other times these have come before you, if there's changes or other things that wanna be discussed, certainly, that's possible. It's certainly possible for Mr. Kaplan's client or him to speak with the board and see if they can come to some understanding. As far as the amount of the assessment, the numbers that Mr. Kaplan were talking, was talking about, in 2017, there was roughly twenty thousand dollars assessed to the Blackstone Business Improvement District. That's just the area that runs on Farnham Street from thirty-six to Forty-second. Assuming that the BID uses the full amount that they could, and if this was created and used the full amount, the full amount of the assessment would be seventy thousand dollars for the entire area. Obviously, it's a lot bigger geographic area, and there is no question that some people's assessments would go down. You're spreading it over a bigger area. There's also frankly, no question that some people's assessments are going to go up. Property that is assessed at a, you know, if you have a half million or million dollar assessment, you're likely to go up because it's, it's based on assessment as opposed to on front footage. I know the, the Business Improvement Board spent a lot of time deciding to switch from one to the other. They certainly can address why they make that recommendation. I frankly didn't have a lot of discussion with them because that's, in, in our case, either mechanism is acceptable and, and used by different people for whatever they think is the best for their particular area. So I hope I addressed some of the questions, and I'm happy to answer any other questions if you have any.
Thank you. Don't see any other lights. So, you have a light on? Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, Bernard, before you get too far from the microphone, I, I wanna make sure I think I heard. So is the current budget, did you say was around twenty thousand? Is that what I heard?
That's what they spent in 2017. And I appreciate, they probably had the ability to spend a little bit more than that, but that's what they spent in 2017.
Okay. And then, and I apologize, maybe someone from the BID might be better to answer this, but I assume in, in previous years to 2017, it was roughly about the same?
It's actually increased. The ordinance that, the amendments that we did to the Blackstone BID allowed for some increases that originally didn't occur. And quite frankly, much like several of the other business improvement districts, as they've become more established, there's more things that people want them to do. And as long as they stay within the parameters of what the ordinance authorizes, they can. Because unlike downtown, where we have a specific budget, most of the other BIDs, there's a max, and they only charge people in the neighborhood what they actually spend, so what they actually do. So even though the budget may, when I say the budget in 2019, if this were approved, would allow seventy thousand dollars, they may only spend forty thousand or fifty thousand. And if they spend forty thousand, that's what people in the neighborhood are gonna be asked to spend for 2019. They don't, it's not the full amount of the assessment.
Okay. And then, how is, so I guess that, we understand now the purpose to expand it is to, as, as laid out in the ordinance, things like lighting and security and, and some of those items. But then, prior to the, this expansion, they've been doing some of those things already? Is that correct?
I think they've been doing some of those things in a small area. This will allow them to do them in the larger geographic area. The businesses that are developing on the periphery of the original Blackstone business area will get the benefit of the additional things as well as the people that live there and, and people who do business there. So some of these things are, are done. I think the budget will allow them to do things in a greater amount. They'll be, certainly have more availability for money to do security and some of the beautifying things. They presumably would also have more, more budget to do marketing, but they've got a bigger area to serve. Because the theory is, I mean, you have to serve the, the, this is not just for the area along Farnham from thirty-six to Forty-second. By expanding the boundaries, you also have to expand the services to everybody within the new boundaries.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Could I, Adrian, could, sorry, I might have a couple of questions just as it relates to the board too then. First of all, let me go back to the budget. I think with the, with the way this is currently being proposed, it's about seventy thousand dollars of, of funds that would be generated, but are you, you also have some, some contributions or at least commitments from some to, who are not necessarily within the district to contribute to this? Is that correct?
Yes, we've had discussions. Those are not finalized and inked yet on paper about exact amounts, but we've had ongoing discussions about that. And until that's done, I'd prefer not to say exactly what those amounts are and who they are.
Okay. But, but I guess then, the intent would be then to spend those, those dollars as well?
Yeah. Obviously, they'd have a big say in how that, those dollars were spent for items in the district that they found valuable. But yeah, they would serve along the same categories that you're talking about, cleaning and maintenance, security, beautification, promotion of the district. You bet.
And so those items would be equally applied to the, the entire district?
Correct. I mean, if, if a certain project comes up that they're excited about, we would definitely, the board, keep that in mind, that it would be something that's of shared benefit for the entire district.
So lighting could possibly go all the way from Dewey to, a new lighting project could go all the way from Dewey to Dodge?
Potentially. I hate to say commit, that's, a lighting project is gonna be the, the thing that happens, but potentially, yes.
Okay. And then, tell me about the, the five percent bumps, both annual escalators in, in the, about the, the valuation, or what's applied to the valuation, as well as, I think, just the, the, the budget. You've got five percent bumps in each, right?
Yeah, sure. So a little bit of that is based on ongoing discussions we had as a BID, and we just felt like that if the district continued to develop the way it has along that same route of success, we probably would need more to fulfill those. One of the items that came about during discussions amongst the board was that our budget initially was not keeping pace with some of the requests we were getting from the community, and a five percent escalator from the original budget just wasn't keeping pace. So the idea was that we'll still keep a five percent in there with the thought that this thing's gonna, this district's gonna keep developing at a rapid pace, and we wanna be able to meet the request of the neighborhood as they come to us.
Okay. And then, but there's no cap on that? There's no sunset on any of the bumps?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. And then, and, and where, where do most of these requests come from? Who's, who's making these requests?
Yeah, we have some that come from business owners, some that come from property owners in the district, whether they be homeowners or, you know, business property owners. And so it's a mix, honestly.
Okay. And then, how, how big is the current board?
The current board, I think this is public information for you. It's a list of, let's see, ten, ten members?
Okay. And then, and, and the, and they are representative both of businesses or residents of the district as well as some from outside as well, correct?
We have one resident who just lives in the neighborhood. We have business owners, and then we have property owners, yes. And then, obviously, Brian Spencer's here, who is with you and MC.
Okay.
So it's a nice mix.
Okay. Thanks, Adrian.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. President. Adrian, if you'd stay. I just note that I'm a big supporter of business improvement districts for all the reasons that have been noted here today and for the obvious progress they've made in so many different parts of our city. To various degrees of, to the extent of various degrees, I've been involved in all five of the BIDs that have been formed, but most intently Dundee and Benson. And there's a lot of similarities, I think, with Blackstone and Benson in particular in the respect that, how far it's come in such a short period of time, but that also how many properties and different property owners you have in that area. Benson was like that too and had a lot, and still has a lot, very, very different types of businesses and business owners to talk to about a business improvement district and to try to get on the same page. And that's the most difficult part of something like this, is to get that consensus on how to go about doing it. Sometimes it's not even so much a discussion about what are you gonna do because the vision is exciting, and I think you've laid out a good vision and, and tasks that you'll be trying to accomplish with this funding. But the mechanism for funding sometimes can be tricky to, to figure out to everyone's liking. So my question to you is, it sounds like you do have very good consensus on your plan here, given how many people are here in support of it that are business owners. We do have some opposition, though, and I'm pleased to hear him say that he's, he's not contesting the value of the BID or that those properties receive value from the BID because I think they do, and they have. But I think the one item of contention is the change of how, how multifamily is treated. I think right now, well, what they're seeking is keeping it the same as now, I believe, which is a fifty percent assessment, or an exemption is their desire as opposed to assessed like everybody else. Can you just address for me how you came to that decision as a group as to how that came about? That one change? Yeah? Go ahead, Jay.
Name and address, Jay.
Jay Lund, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham. Sorry, Adrian, if you wanna, I just, a couple of different hats on here. I just kinda wanted to, for the record, say, you know, as a significant property owner in the existing BID and in the expanded BID, Greenslake Clarity Ventures, I think we're gonna be paying somewhere close to forty percent of, of the budget. Of the, a huge majority of the assessed value of the properties that we own is actually in, in apartment buildings that we own. Those are the, those are the five-story buildings that are dense in our TIF conversation from earlier that produce massive amounts of taxes per acre. So I would, I would argue as a, as a developer, as a commercial property owner, that owning multi-tenant apartment buildings is very much a commercial enterprise. I mean, I think we looked at, you know, we look at these things with risk and the investment that we make and, and, you know, looking at, at our portfolio and some of the, the assessments that are gonna come, come forward if you choose to approve the expansion, we would be paying somewhere close to about three dollars per month per apartment. So I think that, you know, one could conclude with the amount of investment that's been made in the Blackstone District and crime reduction and, and traffic calming and, and jobs created, that that's a very small investment to make to, to your investment enterprise of owning an apartment building. Two other pieces, just for the record, I wanted to say that our BID meetings are open meetings, and all the board members are appointed by the mayor, so we invite anybody to come to those meetings to say, how do you spend, how do you spend that money every year, and is it benefiting me equally as a property owner? So everybody has that ability to show up and, and voice their support. And then just lastly, I'll point out that our twenty thousand dollar budget that we have, have existing relative to, say, a Benson, which is, has about, I believe, about a sixty thousand dollar budget, what we're trying to achieve is very, very difficult for that district. And for the first two or three years of the Blackstone BID, about half of our budget, about ten thousand dollars a year of our twenty thousand dollar a year budget, was going to pay back Public Works for loaning us, you know, part of the money to convert the, the street. So we've really, for all the success that the Blackstone has had and the BID has helped it out with, we, we haven't had a ton of resources and, and, you know, we viewed this expansion of the boundaries as, as a way to, to help with that, so.
Thanks. I appreciate that. And so you would express it as, the multifamily part of this, your, your, your response to that question is that it was engagement of the property owners involved, there were public meetings, you feel you may have ninety-nine percent approval, but maybe not a hundred percent approval for that method?
Yeah, I think there's always gonna be, there would always be a debate about, on the methodology. And again, all the BIDs all over town do do it a little bit differently because every neighborhood is a little bit different.
Yeah. That's true. They all do, do it a little bit differently, and I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with that answer. And I, I think that even though in the end, we did have a few folks, I think in every area, that weren't entirely pleased with the initial BID assessment and program I worked. I would say, and I know in my district at least, there's nobody who's questioning now the value of what they've received. I think that'll be the case here. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Next item?
Non-action items, items forty-nine through sixty-nine do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned. Motion adjourned. Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at three twenty-five.